We'll go ahead and call our meeting to orders. It's September the 26th, 2017, regular session, it's 5:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yocum.
Here.
Wisdom.
Here.
Story.
Here.
Spearman.
Here.
Nixess.
Here.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Hood.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Whispe. Franks.
Here.
Eaton.
Here.
Clifton.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Benfield Ronnie.
Here.
Benfield Bellino.
Here.
Seventeen present, one absent.
We'll have our invocation by Mr. Birch Spearman and our pledge by making.
Father, it's Frank. Father, it's an honor and a privilege that we come for you to lift our thanks for all the things that you've done within our lives. Father, we ask that you flood our hearts with light and knowledge of you. God bless, God, our greatest desire is to know you, hope us to understand the incredible greatness of your power for us who believe. Lord, we fixing to have a meeting here tonight, and we ask that you guide and direct us as we conduct the business of our county. Best is in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now we move into the elections portion of our meeting tonight, and at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Pro Tem Chris Jackson. First item of business we have tonight is the election of Chair for the Lawrence County Legislative Body for the upcoming year, be from now till August 31st of next year. Do I hear any nominations? Got a motion and a second for Mr. T.R. Williams. Any discussion, any more nominations?
Make a motion, nomination cease, lack of evacuation.
We have a motion for the nominations to cease and elections end. All in favor of T.R. Williams serving as Chair for the upcoming year? Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that, appreciate your support on that. Next is the election of the Chair Pro Tem of Lawrence County Legislative Body. Mr. Chairman, Chris.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanted to thank everybody for the last three years that you've allowed me to serve as Vice Chairman of the Board. It's been an honor to serve among friends that I trust and think a lot of. Just want to say tonight, despite the Ken Exec's support and support among some of the Commissioners, I do not want my name put into nomination just because of other obligations that I have that may take my time away from this, so I think we should elect somebody that has the time, the effort, and the knowledge to make this board successful in that coming year, and I can't think of anybody better than my good friend Birch Spearman. So I would like to nominate Birch Spearman the Pro Tem for the upcoming year.
Mr. Jackson.
I decline.
I got two declines. I can't be both now.
You got a, you got a.
Yes, sir. I'd like to place in nomination Scott Franks.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next is County Lawyer.
I'd like to nominate Charlie Holt.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. That was the election of notaries. Get a motion. Without. Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Report of Resolution Committee.
Name's a dog.
Got a motion by Lana Harris, a second by Brandon Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? Prove the, this is not on your list, but we need to approve the county financial reports. Move without. Second. Got a motion by Chris Jackson, a second by Shane Eaton. Yes.
Motion by Lana.
Second by Shane Eaton. Second. You good? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, carries. First resolution that we're considering tonight is a resolution approving minutes of regular session, if you like. Without a motion by Wayne Yocum. Second. Shane Eaton, Story. Any discussion? All in favor? Resolution to approve minutes of August the 10th, 2017, special session.
Move without.
Got a motion by Mr. Birch Spearman, a second by Ms. Lana Harris. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next is a resolution to approve the amendments to the 2017-18 Lawrence County Budget. Without a motion by Wayne Yocum. Second. Second by Mr. Shane Eaton. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call for that, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution approving the financial reports of the county officials. Charlie, we did a roll call on that.
I would, you might have minded the more vacation can there was.
We skipped one there because they did not submit amendments to us. Can I get a motion, Lynn? Move without. Got a motion by Wayne Yocum. A second by Nathan Keaton. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Ah.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution approving the financial reports of the county officials. Charlie, we did a roll call on that.
I would, you might have minded the more vacation can there was.
We skipped one there because they did not submit amendments to us. Can I get a motion, Lynn? Move without. Got a motion by Wayne Yocum. A second by Nathan Keaton. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Ah.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution approving the bond of Constable James Cozart.
Move without.
Got a motion here, Mr. Birch Spearman. A second by Wisdom. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a resolution appointing members of the Lawrence County Emergency Communications Board. Move without. Got a motion by Mr. Birch Spearman, a second by Mr. Russ Brewer. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Resolution to approve an appointment of Teresa Purcell as Director of Accounts and Budget and Purchasing Agent for Lawrence County and Concess Salaries.
Move without.
Got a motion by Mr. Spearman, a second by Scott Franks. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a resolution approving the purchase of three new welcome to Summertown signs in the amount of $825.
Move without.
Got a motion, second by Nate Keaton. Any discussion?
Did we ever find out who requested the signs?
Yeah.
Yeah. For those out here, it's a Resolution Committee meeting. When this came up, I wasn't even aware of it, and apparently it had gone through the Facilities Committee. There was a gentleman who had came to T.R.'s office to request it, and I had shared at the committee meeting that we had put up some signs a few years ago. These were for some additional signs on other roads and also for some maintenance of the existing signs. The previous signs were purchased by donations from various businesses about three years ago, four years ago, something like that. So that's, I learned about it after that meeting as well, so.
The only thing I got to say about it is, which I don't oppose it, but, you know, that this could, just as long as we stay consistent, this, you know, if some other communities, you know, want a welcome sign, you know, then I would think that we should honor it too. So, I mean.
Move without. Any other discussion? All in question. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution changing the speed limit on Harding Road to 15 miles per hour the entire length of said road. Move without. Got a motion by Brandon Brown, a second by Avery Story. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next is a resolution approving the purchase of three new welcome to Summertown signs in the amount of $825.
Move without.
Got a motion, second by Nate Keaton. Any discussion?
Did we ever find out who requested the signs?
Yeah.
Yeah. For those out here, it's a Resolution Committee meeting. When this came up, I wasn't even aware of it, and apparently it had gone through the Facilities Committee. There was a gentleman who had came to T.R.'s office to request it, and I had shared at the committee meeting that we had put up some signs a few years ago. These were for some additional signs on other roads and also for some maintenance of the existing signs. The previous signs were purchased by donations from various businesses about three years ago, four years ago, something like that. So that's, I learned about it after that meeting as well, so.
The only thing I got to say about it is, which I don't oppose it, but, you know, that this could, just as long as we stay consistent, this, you know, if some other communities, you know, want a welcome sign, you know, then I would think that we should honor it too. So, I mean.
Move without. Any other discussion? All in question. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to execute contract with an architectural firm to design new buildings for the Lawrence County Higher Education Center to house Columbia State Community College and other four-year colleges and universities.
Move without.
Got a motion by Scott Franks, a second by Birch Spearman. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution to amend the resolution number 201-701-2412 to provide clarity to the guidelines for the purpose of pipe materials for in-house water line extension projects.
Move without.
Got a motion, second by Brandon Brown, a second by Avery Story. Any discussion?
This was discussed at the agenda meeting, and just wanted everybody to be aware, when you vote for this, you're changing it, the formula per person, which it is now, divided out from the cost of the total, pipe and material cost on a project, it's going to be per household. So if you vote for this, you may actually be hamstringing if you have a project, and you're going to be dividing it less by a lesser number, so you're going to have a bigger cost. Likelihood is, if you don't up the number from 2,400 or 2,500, you may be actually cutting yourself out of a water line project. So it's actually going to knock some of these projects out even more than when we first adopted this. The reason we had per person on the guidelines is because that was a mirror of what the state had. Lori Fisher, who helps us with the water lines every time we apply, she's the one that said that that's what the state uses, and we kind of modified it after that. So if we do adopt it, just be aware that it may actually be a little bit more stringent on the projects that we put forward.
Yes, my comment. The last time we looked at this, we had four options on that. All three of them met exceptionally well, the $2,500, the one was just slightly outside of that. So the per household cost actually puts less burden on the county finances when we do that. We can't necessarily keep up. The committee said we can't keep up with the state and go per person, so it's per household that we're looking at. But three of the last four were under the $2,500 per household. The other one was slightly over.
Any other discussion?
Is it recommended by the Utility Committee?
It is. Since we've had different views on that, can I get a roll call on it, please?
Yocum.
No.
Wisdom.
No.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
No.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Got eleven, four, six, opposed, and one absent. Motion carries. Next is a resolution to fund water line extensions on Lindsey Hill Road in the amount not to exceed $2,535. On Chief Creek Road in the amount not to exceed $15,177.25. On Jonestown Road in an amount not to exceed $9,686.59. On North Brace Road in an amount not to exceed $12,639.84.
Move without.
Got a motion by Chris Jackson, a second by Wayne Yocum. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call on that as well, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the county executive to execute contract with an architectural firm to design new buildings for the Lawrence County Higher Education Center to house Columbia State Community College and other colleges and universities offering a s degree.
Move without.
Got a motion by Scott Franks, a second by Birch Spearman. Any discussion? Can I get a roll call, please?
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution modifying and amending Lawrence County government policy as to the method of calculating amount of Lawrence County government will pay for employee health insurance premium.
Move without.
Got a motion by Nathan Keaton. A second by Lana Harris. Any discussion?
Does anybody know anything about this?
Teresa, you want to talk about that?
Sure. The way the resolution was previously worded in the past, Wayne, the way the county contributed toward the health insurance premium for employees, it paid 90% of the lowest rate, okay? That worked when the county had one or two plans. Now there are multiple plans and multiple tiers, so basically it made it unequal for employees. You had some employees paying nothing, and then you had some employees paying quite a bit. So what this does is it pays 90% of each plan, and there's no increase in the total that the county's having to pay, it actually equals out, so we're not asking for an increase in anything in the budget.
Call for questions. Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution modifying and amending Lawrence County government policy as to the method of calculating amount of Lawrence County government will pay for employee health insurance premium.
Move without.
Got a motion by Nathan Keaton. A second by Lana Harris. Any discussion?
Does anybody know anything about this?
Teresa, you want to talk about that?
Sure. The way the resolution was previously worded in the past, Wayne, the way the county contributed toward the health insurance premium for employees, it paid 90% of the lowest rate, okay? That worked when the county had one or two plans. Now there are multiple plans and multiple tiers, so basically it made it unequal for employees. You had some employees paying nothing, and then you had some employees paying quite a bit. So what this does is it pays 90% of each plan, and there's no increase in the total that the county's having to pay, it actually equals out, so we're not asking for an increase in anything in the budget.
Call for questions. Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of Lawrence County to see in the aggregate principal amount if not to exceed 88,300,000 in one or more series, making provision for the issuance of sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, a premium if any, and interest on the bonds. Get a motion.
Move without.
Got a motion.
Now that exceeds 8,300,000.
What did I say?
Eighty-eight.
Oh, 8,300,000, sorry.
Second.
Got a second from Shane Eaton. Any discussion?
Move without.
Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution authorizing the issuing of general obligation refunding bonds of Lawrence County to see in the aggregate principal amount if not to exceed 88,300,000 in one or more series, making provision for the issuance of sale and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, a premium if any, and interest on the bonds. Get a motion.
Move without.
Got a motion.
Now that exceeds 8,300,000.
What did I say?
Eighty-eight.
Oh, 8,300,000, I'm sorry.
Second.
Got a second from Shane Eaton. Any discussion?
Move without.
Roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Wisdom.
Ah.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Hodlin.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whispe.
Franks.
Yes.
Eaton.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Benfield Ronnie.
Ah.
Benfield Bellino.
Yes.
Anybody wish to change their votes? Board is closed, seventeen four, one absent.
Next is a resolution approving the bond continuation of Constable Paul McBride, a resolution to add Grace Lane and Childress Lane to the official county road list, a resolution to donate surplus vehicles to the new Prospect Fire Department, and then there's a final one on the back page that I don't think we'll have to take any action on if we vote for 618A. Do we need to adopt the first one? We're talking on 618, or do we just do 618A?
Just A, and for some reason, I thought it was on the original agenda, so it would just be 18, but it would be the one with the ettridge.
Added it.
We're going to take the A off.
Okay.
A move we suspend for the aforementioned resolutions.
Second. Got a motion by Chris Jackson, a second by Scott Franks. All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed. First resolution is the resolution to provide matching funds for the various grants that we receive.
Move without.
Got a motion by Chris Jackson, who's second, Shane Eaton, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed. Resolution to approve agreement to extend interlocal agreement for a joint cooperative operation and maintenance of a centralized emergency dispatch center.
Move without.
Got a motion.
Scott Franks.
Second. A second by Birch Spearman. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, are you comfortable with the one-year extension?
I am. I was a little nervous about not having that amount of time to figure that. We've got a little work to do to figure out the funding for that, so we'll, I don't want to leave that for the next administration to address, but we'll try to make that a point, Chris, to get that taken care of before we go to this administration.
So it is counted postponed until next year, right?
If we do this.
Okay.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next is a resolution approving the bond continuation of Constable Paul McBride.
Move without.
Got a motion by Scott Franks, a second by Avery Story. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution to add Grace Lane and Childress Lane to the official county road list.
Move without.
Got a motion by Chris Jackson, and a second by Shane Eaton. Discussion? Yes.
I would like to mention on this Grace Lane, this has been for the Highway Committee two or three times. At the last meeting that we had, Charlie Holt was going to give us a legal interpretation of this. At the time, we weren't sure about timing of this road, but after that meeting, we found out this road, it was not in existence in 1999. This property was bought in 1999. The resolution in 99 was, let's see, I don't know the resolution number, but the resolution that states that all county roads have to be brought up to county specs before they can be paved was in 99. This road was not there at the time. The road leading to this, Clifton Road, residents paid $25,200 to have one mile of that road paved. That's going to this road that we're voting on. If we open this road up, we open them all up, every road in the county. I think we should refund everybody that ever paid for a road which is in excess of $400,000. There's at least 25 roads on them. Donny Joe's got a list that'll need to be paid, but they don't have to be brought up to county standards. That's what the resolution says now, so y'all should think about this. This is going to open up a big can if it passes, so. Charlie, do you have anything to add on that? I know that you had some, you was going to get some legal interpretation, but I think that we found out that the dates didn't coincide with what we were told.
Yes, and it's also pertinent that in 2002, a whole list of roads were moved to be added to the road list, and some of them were denied. The BPH's development that subdivided these lots and sold them, purchased the property in either late 1999 or early 2000. They reported a plat in the Register of Deeds office in October 27, 2000. Didn't sell the first lot until December 2000. So everybody knew at the time, I must say everybody knew, the developers should have known what the county's position was. Unfortunately, they didn't tell the landowners that they were purchasing it, that it was just an easement road, a public road without being a county road. So I agree with Brandon that to do that violates the intent of the 1999 resolution where the standards were adopted, and would be ill-advised not to do that, particularly where other groups have raised money and paid for it themselves.
Any other discussion?
Okay, let me say so.
Okay.
resolution where the standards were adopted, and would be ill-advised not to do that, particularly where other groups have raised money and paid for it themselves.
Any other discussion?
Okay, let me say something.
Okay.
I've got this from the Register of Deeds down here, you know. This plat, plat, was put on in January of nineteen ninety-nine. Right there it is for anybody to see, anybody to see.
The plat says?
The plat.
The plat says?
Yes, the plat.
That's not what the Register of Deeds?
No, it's not on the Register of Deeds. I agree with you. But she told me on the Register of Deeds that sometimes it was a long time after these were registered before they come up there. That has nothing to do with when these roads were started or this thing and all.
When was the property purchased?
Huh?
When was the property purchased?
I don't have any idea, but these plats were put out before, and they have to be up to specs and everything before the Register of Deeds down there will take them. You go down and ask them. You know, I've been down there. You know, they will not take this unless it is up to their requirements, and there is a requirement on it.
Look, I'm looking at a different plat.
You're looking at where did it come from? The tax assessor's office, right? That is a copy of it. I wouldn't doubt it. And you know that when the Register of Deeds down there takes that?
Well, Kenneth Carroll's date of subdivision is September of two thousand. It looks like it recorded November nine of two thousand. If you'll look at the Register of Deeds stamp.
I'm looking at the.
The Register of Deeds stamp, and then the date of the actual survey. They couldn't record it before the survey dated, and it's September of two thousand.
Well, why did she tell me down there and got it off the plat? And I.
They may have purchased it in nineteen ninety-nine.
Well.
But the date on the, the date of Kenneth Carroll's survey is September two thousand, and best I can tell, that's November of two thousand. The date of.
Anyways, that's the information that I got.
But, Mr. Clifton, still, no one came to the county and asked for that to be included because there's no stamp on there that it's been accepted by the county highway department or anybody else.
No, it's never been accepted by the highway department, you know. That's why I am here, you know. Okay, you want to get down to the nitty-gritty of it, and I'll tell you, and everybody's sitting here, the last time that we met, Donny Joe Brown had on there to put a road on the county road list that was not on it, had never been on it, and was not up to specs. And everybody here sat here and voted for it. I'm asking y'all to vote to put these roads on there. Now, I don't care what it opens up. If it opened up a can of worms, we can fish with them. Because these people need a road, and you can do it. The state has got a, I don't know whatever you call it, that says the Lawrence County Commission can close or open a road at any time they want to. They don't say nothing about those specs because they give us that authority, and we have it. And those people need a road. It's six fifteen people, I mean, their houses out there on these two little roads, it need. The school bus won't go down them no more. The mail won't go down them. And I, how would y'all like to live out there? And I can prove by every one sitting here, not every one, but five people, that this road is in dire need. It's not really passable, you know. Them people pay out taxes for roads, part of their taxes go just like anybody else's, you know.
I'm on the Highway Committee, and like Brandon said, we've discussed this three or four times, and I've listened to the debate every time on both sides with Donny Joe and then Bobby. Bobby actually drove me out there. Hell, we could drive. It's almost impassable. If you went out there, you would feel sorry for the people. He's definitely right about that. I can definitely see Donny Joe's point on the specs. If you're going to have a rule list or a spec list, you need to abide by them. I completely agree with that, but if you remember back two years ago, I advocated for a road to be added to the road list that was not on there. It wasn't up to specs. It was Stanford Lane in my district. We adopted that, and we adopted it because we said it was a mistake. It was an oversight. As Bobby said, last time we met, we adopted another road that wasn't on the road list. It wasn't up to specs. We did that because they said it was an oversight because Wayne County had worked it for years. We have a spec list, but we've made exceptions in the past, and in that resolution, nowhere does the language say, you know, exceptions can be made for mistakes. So if we're worried about violating the spec list that we passed years ago, I would advocate that we've already done that. And if we've already done that for those roads, I've come to the conclusion after hearing the debate that we need to set Mr. Clifton's robe and help those people.
In another part, in two thousand and two, the Rural Committee and the county legislative body met and put seventeen, got them right here, in two thousand and two, on the road list. Got them right there for anybody to see. Wasn't that after this you say passed?
I was just wondering what the resolution is, that's all I can.
Well, the resolution, you say.
Was that not grandfathered in? I think there was some grandfather.
Ah, no, wait a minute.
I mean, I was.
Wait a minute. I was on the commission. Yeah, you were. You. And I explained the other day the whole thing, and I started talking.
You did explain.
Charlie, is there anywhere in the resolution that makes exceptions if there was an oversight or a mistake?
Chris, when we did this, can I speak?
Yes.
When we did this, on the resolution, it said to come forth now, if Charlie remembers. And there will be no more roads put on after that time, right there. And everybody brought their roads up, Donny went out and checked them and approved them. We voted on them, and that's the reason those was accepted at that time.
What about the two roads that I meant? I mean, those weren't up to specs?
Well, it comes back to what you said a minute ago, whoever read it, I believe, Brandon, or it was a contractor, and that plat could be for the purpose of selling the property, can't it, Charlie?
Yes, that's.
It don't mean nothing, but they did the road, that main road, and these are two branch roads off of Clifton Road.
I understand that, but we've adopted two roads in the last year that were not on the county road list. Did we not open up a can of worms with those two roads?
Well, it wasn't on my account. I didn't vote for it.
I think everybody voted for those two roads.
Everybody sitting here did. If they can't do it for me. When I did vote for the last one because Donny Joe was the one that said it was done for a reason.
We've got some good, healthy debate, but I'm going to ask that we take some order back in this and wait until you recognize before you speak. Yes, sir.
Well, I think we are a better county, you know, to treat people.
I recognize it, Mr. Brown.
We're talking about oversight. These roads were overlooked. Grace Lane was not overlooked. Grace Lane was not in existence when this resolution passed. Some of these others were. I mean, that's, I don't see that as oversight. I mean, yeah, they were dropped off the map or dropped off the list for a while, but they shouldn't have been. This was never added to the list.
Field, yes, please.
Yeah, I did. I comment, I guess. The two that Chris talked about were already in existence. The one we're talking about here was put into existence by the developer. He's the one who failed to do his job. Why should we go back and fix it? I agree that people need good roads, Bobby. I agree with that.
Wait a minute.
But the situation is that the developer did not prep the road right, with the specs.
Sorry, ladies. Ladies, cheers. I'll get back to you.
That's all I'd say.
Let me tell you something. The developer did bring it up to the standards at that time. Go back and check your standards at that time. All it called for was chur fifty-foot right-of-way and all that and everything. It was brought up at that time to those standards. Y'all have not, I've researched this from top to bottom, you know. These roads deserve to be put on the county road list.
Why was it not put on the road list whenever they were up standard?
Huh? I don't know. I can't tell you that.
Mr. Chair.
Oh. One thing. Brandon there said, you know, if we considered taking these roads in, you know, we'd have to pay back all the money. Well, I think that was done last month in August, when we took the road in that Donny Joe wanted us to take in. I voted for it. I supported it. But I think it's time for us to have another day of reckoning, to look, sit down and look and see what's happened in the last fifteen or seventeen years since we've adopted this. We need to look, Donny Joe says he's got twenty-five roads. I think we need to look at it. Let's see what the situations are. It may be something that we want to do, but Bobby's road, y'all, there's six people, I think, lives down there. I think it's, I think, I mean, it's time for us to do a good Samaritan thing. I am for taking that road in. I know that this body can do so if we want to. We've done already overlooked the restrictions in August. We've overlooked them with Stanford Lane, and so I think, I would like to see the Highway Committee get Donny Joe's list and us look at everything that we got again. Like I said, it's been fifteen years since we've adopted them things. There may be something out there, but anyway, I am in support of accepting the road.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that Ronnie said that when they adopted that one resolution after those roads were on there, there's going to be no more roads put on the road list, is that correct? We violated that every time we voted a road on. So what's the difference?
Yeah, I mean.
Excuse me? The Highway Committee's put roads on since this resolution's been adopted. Now, this resolution says there's no more roads. If we put on that road list, y'all violated that every time you put a road on.
Excuse me. The specs. We can't be added to the specs.
Could I say something else?
Yes.
Everybody has got one of these road lists. Everybody is supposed to have one. All you have to do is go back through the years and look on it, and it's got a new road list, the ones that's been worked on, and all, and everything. Okay, we adopt this once a year. Every year, we've adopted new roads.
Yes, I just want to say one thing. If you were at the Highway Meetings, Bobby stated that he didn't want this tar and gravel to pave. He just wants it graded, so.
All they want is a way in and an out. It's pitiful when the school bus goes down, quit going down the road, and the mail quit going down, you know. And this one guy, and I've got his name down here if you want to know who it was, I talked to on Labor Day is when it was, lives out there. I asked him, you know, he moved there in two thousand and three. He said he bought the house. He didn't know how old it was, you know, but he had lived there and all, you know. I said, does a school bus run up and down through you? He says, not anymore, because I knew it didn't, you know. But he told me, he says, the other day, I was out here and saw a little girl walking down the road from having to meet the school bus out there in the rain. How do you think that makes me feel? How would you feel if one of your kids had to walk in the rain? I wouldn't like it. They don't like it. I don't like it. And if anybody sits here and says they do like it, I don't know what to think about.
Call question.
Mr. Chairman.
Call question. I get a roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Whiston.
Um.
Story.
Pass.
Spearman.
Pass.
Nixess.
Pass.
Mottler.
Ah.
Keaton.
Pass.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Ah.
Harris.
Pass.
Whiston. Frank.
No.
Keaton.
Yes.
Clifton.
Yes.
Brown.
No.
Brewer.
No.
Ginnfield Ronnie.
No.
Ginnfield Bellner.
No.
Anybody wish to change your votes? Doors closed. I got seven yes, five no, five pass, and one absentee.
Resolution fails.
Could I say something, sir?
Yes, sir.
Now, I know what y'all think about the people of Lawrence County, you know. I feel sorry for you, you know. I'm through. I won't be back. I resign right now. Okay? If y'all will do something for Donny Joe Brown, just because it's him, you know, and won't do something for them people out there, I don't think much of y'all. I'll just say to your face of them, I don't care why you like it or why you don't. I don't hope any of you anything. I'll see y'all later. Maybe, I may not. I mean, I know.
Next resolution and the final resolution is to donate a surplus vehicle to the new Prospect Fire Department.
Move the doc.
Second. A motion by Wayne Yocum, a second by Chris Jackson. Any discussion? Go get a roll call, please.
Yocum.
Ah.
Whiston.
Um.
Story.
Yes.
Spearman.
Yes.
Nixess.
Yes.
Mottler.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
Hood.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Whiston. Frank.
Yes.
Keaton.
Yes.
Clifton. Brown.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Ginnfield Ronnie. Ginnfield Delno. Anybody wish to change your vote? Seventeen, four, and two absent. Move the adjournment.